We're gonna start tonight as you see on the agenda. The public hearing for the FY 2020 budget is now open. I'd like to turn this over to Joanne, our treasurer, to give a brief report.
All right. How are y'all? Boys, a lot of people. Good to see y'all. Anyway, it's my favorite time of year. I've said this three times. I get to see it three times a year. This is it. So we've got property tax rates that are gonna stay the same, so no one has to fear that. And that is at .639. And then refuse revenue fees, that's 327. It's the exact same fee it was last year. But that's not going up. The special assessment that you see on your tax bill includes your trash, your sewer benefit, and your water benefit. Your trash is 327, like I just spoke of. Your water benefit is $102. And then your sewer benefit is $250. Total is $679 is that special assessment you see on your tax bill each year, once a year. The only other change is if you've been following along our process on the board docs and through our meetings, the only other changes since our last two meetings has been a change in the employee COLA rate. We originally had 0%. We went back and looked at the budget again and were able to do a 1% COLA. So that's one of the changes that you'll see in here. There's some other things. I mean, I could go into a lot of detail, but I'm sure you guys are getting a little bored with me. Let me hit the highlights on the back page, which go over some of the main changes since we've been meeting. And this is what they are. That was the COLA we spoke about. We reinstated the $3,450 for sunrise celebration of the arts. If anyone doesn't know what that is, that's when sunrise gardens, we have artists come out and they have prizes and competition. So we increased the community conservation expense from 3,000, which was originally submitted to 7,000. And anyone who hasn't or isn't aware of community conservation, Lisa Garrett is the director of that, and you'll be seeing a lot more of her as we progress. So she'll be educating everybody as we move forward. We reduced and recalculated FICA. That was on page six. Increased the annual retirement contribution because of the 1% COLA. They go hand in hand. And workman's compensation, we received a little bit of a decrease on that. So we haven't experienced any losses, so we've got to be ready this year. Reduced the contingency reserve as a result of some of these items that went back and forth. And then one of the other items that you saw in the previous two proposals was the water and sewer minimum. We have a five-year conservation plan in place, and what is happening is each year we reduce the minimums. So instead of the 10,000 gallon minimum, we're slowly reducing it. So you'll get to the point to where you only pay for what you use. It won't be just a flat 10,000 gallons given to you. It'll be only what you use. So those of you who are more conservative and use less water, you will benefit greatly from that. We have some seniors who, they only use like 2,000, 3,000 gallons a quarter, and they would benefit too, so they don't have to pay a $10,000 water bill. So that's now set at 6,000 versus the 5,000. So those are the main changes that you'll see in the budget since that time. And again, no increases to taxes, no increases to your special assessments. So if anyone has any questions, I'm available. Needing any explanation, I can help. Other than that, Mayor?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Joanne? I know we've gone through this many, many times. Public, does anybody have any questions about the budget? Fantastic. You did a great job.
Thank you.
So without any questions, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
How about it?
Now a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Thank you so much. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Let's move right into our May 90th Town Council meeting. Call of order, and we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Lisa, can you start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Due to our broad, righteous stance, one nation, under our God, indivisible, and in the great kingdom of heaven.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Lisa. Sorry, but I might just pull that out. You're all right. Stacy, did you do roll call?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Higgins, here. Mr. Vicki, here.
Here.
Ms. Walton. Ms. Shaida.
Here.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Condon. I told you. It's all official.
That's right. We went back and forth on that, so I understand. All right, let's move right into the next item, and that is the agenda approval.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. So move. And move into the April 11 minutes. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
I can't second.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Schedule appointments, the famous Grace Mary Brady.
How do I turn the lights down a little bit? Because these are great little faces.
Alexa, turn the lights down. That's right. Why do we not have... That's right. Our Alexa's called, makes it picky.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Feeling a little bit something different tonight, because I thought it might be fun for everyone, especially since this is the 50th anniversary of International Clerks Association. So I started with when our town was founded, and I thought particularly, some of you council members, clerk, treasurer, law enforcement, you'll really get a big kick out of what our town did in 1910. All right, Joanne, I'm hitting a little button, but it's not moving. Oh, do you gotta turn it on somewhere? Raymond, I'm challenged with this.
No, she's not. It's just... Here, one now.
One now, okay.
Yep, good. All right, now I'm gonna do the button.
All right, do the button for me.
I'm getting my glass to be ready.
So what I did was, I wanted you to see what a 100-year-old page of Curs of Written Minutes looked like. And this is our original minute book, which was started for the town of North Beach in 1910. Early town clerks, I'm only going up to 1924 tonight, but I want you to note that there's all kinds of acting and pro temp, and they're all men. May 28, 1910, that was when our town started and had their first meeting. The meeting was called order by Mayor Charles Williams at 8:30 at night. Present council members were Grease, Binhardt, Ward, Hayes, Harrow, and Shaw. The nomination by Mr. Hayes of Dr. Harrow to act as a temporary clerk. And they had to do an oath of allegiance before they could be sworn in by the Justice of the Peace in Fort Carter County. Everything was filed as the first town record in 1910. June 25, 1910, they had committees, committees for everything, and what you'll find interesting as we go through, we have some of the same committees today. So the Committee for the Boardwalk from the Sand Beach, the reported cost to be $320 without labor or nails. It was decided to continue the committee to look further into the cost of miscellaneous lengths of lumber, as it could be brought in by multiples of three feet instead of all one length. Mr. Faddell had to submit to the mayor and Town Council the cost to buy a seal for the town of $4.50. Mr. Hayes was directed to check on the costs and see if he could get one in Baltimore. And the Committee on the Disposal of Garbage made its report and shared a set of draft ordinances. December 12, 1916, now we have a gap, and I'm hoping, I have like 27 more totes of papers to go through from my parents and grandparents. I'm hoping that's missing four years is in there somewhere, but this big book started in 1910, and then it goes to 1916, and it's more than 1,000 pages. The clerk didn't have any knowledge of the meeting that they had that night, so they had to lay the minutes over until the next meeting. The State Board of Health and the Attorney General, relative to the authority of the Council of North Beach to erect a public improvement for the betterment of sanitation, was read. 1917, in the summer, they paid $1.25 for lighting the street lamps when a town laborer was sick. And they must have really liked this town laborer, because not only did they pay somebody to do his job while he was sick, but they also paid $5.50 for his advanced salary. $4.45 was spent for the town purchase of tools. $1.05 for the table cover to be used in the town hall. Starting in 1910, there's all kinds of referrals to a town hall. I'm gonna have to do a lot of deed research. I could only guess that it would have been somewhere down close to the Coward Hotel, because that was the hub of business back in 1910. But I don't know that for sure. They, $10 for horse feed, $22 for printing, and Mr. Ward was to get a credit, this is your relative Stacy, for taxes in the town in return for digging the well for the town.
Remember his grandfather.
Yeah. All right, Joanne. Winter 1918, they moved and passed that the seawall had to be straight. They moved and passed to appropriate $50 for lumber for the construction of forms for the seawall. They moved and passed to appropriate $17 to reimburse Mr. Lober for his labor. $18 for two barrels of corn and two loads of fodder, and $13 to pay Mr. Lyons for the horse and the toilet.
Donnie, you gotta work with your budget, man. Your budget's a little too high.
I was gonna say the horn.
Okay, I found this interesting, because Donnie sends Scott around all the time. He's always checking on everybody's fire extinguishers. But the mayor and Town Council had to move and pass that the fire extinguisher could be recharged, and then they had to move and pass that the fire extinguisher would be tested on Wednesday the 13th. North Beach Railway, starting in 1910, there's a lot of reference to the North Beach Railway, and they wanted to increase the fare to 10 cents for adults, 5 cents for children, or you could purchase six tickets for 50 cents. Did complain about the closet abutting the property of the Coward Hotel. Don't know what the closet was used for or what the complaint was for, but it was a nuisance, and it had to be removed within five days of receipt of this notice. Then there was talk about the ICE question, because we used to have Tommy's Ice House over in Chesapeake Beach, but there wasn't any substance in the minutes about what the ICE question was. 1919, good progress is being made on the seawall, and it's necessary to raise some money to pay the labors. Mr. Royal paid $75 on the seawall, moved and passed that the first money collected by the treasurer be used to reimburse Dr. Smart and Mr. Schuch for money advanced on building of the seawall. Sanitary committee again was authorized to abate the nuisance of the toilet or Mr. Hayes' lot and used by Mr. Ebbie.
Oh my God.
1919, oh my God. The second Saturday of June every year, the mayor had to approve with the council to appoint a town clerk, treasurer, corporation counsel, three assessors, a street committee, finance committee, public safety committee, sanitary committee, a building committee, and a civic improvement committee. The duties of a clerk were spelled out. All right, Stacy. Clerk had to attend all the meetings unless excused by the mayor for good calls. Keep accurate minutes of the transactions of the council, transcribe them in a record book furnished for that purpose, draw warrants on the treasurer for the payment of accounts only after they've been approved by the finance committee and ordered paid to keep an ordinance record, et cetera, et cetera. What I did was just pull out certain things from each page. June 1921, sand is being removed from the Sand Beach without permission. The committee from the home club appeared before the council to complain about the trash baskets needed on the front, people changing clothes in their automobiles, the kind of bathing suits and the unnecessary parade of bathing suits. The need to remove the stable from the town hall, okay? The need to put a screen in front of Mr. Baldwin's toilet. And Mr. Haller asked the council's permission to remove the old street cars from where they are stored and construct a shed to house his tractor. And they had to get permission to bury a gasoline tank at the corner of the town lot. January 1922, the treasurer is authorized to sell at public auction the street car, which is lying in the street at the junction of Charleston and Washington Avenue on March the 4th, 1933, at 3:00 p.m. An ad was to be put in the Coward Gazette in five conspicuous places in North Beach. August 1922, letter from Mr. Haller regarding to extending the tracks of the North Beach Railway on Washington Avenue, moved and passed that the matter be left in the hands of the mayor. Mr. McDowell made a report in regard to a conference he had with Interstate Commerce Commission in connection with obtaining railway cars for hauling senders, and a letter was received from Mrs. Clerk Griffith in regard to the unsanitary conditions of the property of Mr. J. Lyne. The letter was referred to the sanitary committee. I just need to add that from the beginning of the town in 1910, sanitary issues ran all the way up through 1980. November 1922, application to erect the bandhouse was read. It was referred to the building committee. Now, this is the bandhouse, Jane, you will remember the pictures, in 1933 Hurricane went down. The mayor notified the council that the attorney for the laundry decided to compromise. No action would be taken, and the suit would probably come back up in the spring. I don't, there was nothing in the records to say what that was about. March 1923, the application from the home club for authority to erect suitable building so they could hold meetings, dances, et cetera. It was read and ordinance was prepared, read and adopted, authorizing the home club to erect a clubhouse on the town lot. June 1923, the mayor called the meeting of the old council in the town hall for the purpose of settling old accounts with which such council men would be familiar. The payment for lumber for the railway was $71.28, and the payment to the attorney to type registered voters and arrange the same in alphabetical order was approved. Continued police report, with the influx of a large number of machines, now think about what machines they're talking about. This is cars. They would be kept busy seeing that cars were parked in places, spaces, provided therefore, and that off speeding was stopped. It was dirt roads back then. The roads were dragged by horses or tractor. He, the law enforcement officer, reported one arrests for driving under the influence and one for undressing in an automobile. The total fines collected was $136. The meeting of the old council adjourned at 8:30. Then the report of the election was read, and Judge Banks bore in the new council members. July 1923, lots of discussion regarding electrical lighting of the town. Only action taken was the authorization of the installation of a new engine for the electric light plant on the rear of Mr. Ebbie's premises in block two, blocks nine, and ten. A letter from Mrs. Cleveland, now that's the old Cleveland Hotel that I've showed you all pictures of before, regarding the rates on the railroad and the train service during September was read and referred to the mayor for action. The ladies home club wrote a letter concerning the debris in the bay from South Beach. Motion that Mr. Lewis is authorized to use broken stones to protect the seawall. A motion by Mr. Kane and Carey that the clerk's salary be increased from 25 a year to 50 a year. Mr. Skinner was employed as the town officer for the year August 1st, '23 to August 1st, '24. His salary was $1,200 a year. Discussion regarding the electricity in the town resulted in a motion, and unless Mr. Rickenstein took steps to come into compliance, his electrical franchise would be canceled. The mayor requested that the council put themselves on record as being in favor of having the electrical company remove their plant to some distant point to relieve the townspeople of the noise incident to its operation. A motion made and carried that the privileged branded Mr. Pason for use of the tractor on the roads of the town equipped with cleats or chains be revoked, and that he be directed to remove the cleats or discontinue using the tractor on town roads. Motion made and carried that the salary for the chief of police be increased from $1,200 to $1,500 a year. Mrs. Burgee, and Mrs. Taylor, and we appeared before the council requesting information regarding the application for permit to erect an arcade building in block two. So this was the beginning of our arcade. Council members said that the applicant needed to satisfy sanitary questions, fire protection, use of the building, et cetera. The town, this was really big news in 1923, that we now had three policemen, and Hardy Adams got three days a week for $15. Morel DePro got three days a week for $15. And Ed Skinner got seven days a week for $50.75. Meeting at Mayor Whitfield's home in Washington, D.C. When they weren't meeting at the town hall, location undetermined at this time, most of the meetings were held in Washington, D.C. in our earlier days. The mayor read a letter from Adam Ross regarding the rejection of the application for appointment of policeman Skinner as the Coward County Deputy Sheriff. And the mayor announced the purpose of the meeting was to consider the amendments to be made to the charter and plans for the disposal of the train and supper tickets. Motion made and seconded, carried that the names of the streets be changed as suggested by Mr. Lewis. So that's when you look at those earlier town maps with all of those names, if anybody had some interest, I bought the old names and what it was changed to by all of this. All houses had to be numbered, so everything that was started in this original charter was officially changed on April 2nd, 1924. Request for transfer of license to operate the bakery from Baltimore and Bay Avenue to the new location at Atlantic and Washington. That motion was approved. Request for license to conduct a dance hall was disapproved because of fire menace of the garage adjoining property owners would also have to approve. Mr. Rickenstein, I put in, he's still in business, because this is the guy that owned the electricity, but the Town Council kept going back and forth with him all the time. He asked the town to guarantee a bond for him of $3,000. Moved and passed that the mayor be authorized to remove the concrete benches in the town jail and purchased two army pots to take place of the benches. So wherever this town hall was, there was a jail and a stable attached to it. Discussion relative to the suit against the North Beach Railway Company by the Chesapeake Beach Railway Company led to a motion by Mr. Lewis that the town retain Mr. Bunting by a suit against the North Beach Railway Company for the recovery of money due to the town in conjunction with the filling in, et cetera, done on Washington Avenue, it's now Chesapeake Avenue. That motion carried. Mayor reported that county commissioners acknowledged liability for road taxes for the year 1924, but the matter of the 1923 road taxes had been taken up yet by the county commissioners. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
If you have any, I mean, you need to go on a museum if you haven't been there yet. I tell all visitors and tell family members coming in that I think it's one of the best museums around. And what's amazing is what you see is probably not even a fraction of what Grace Mary has.
Yeah, the kids are scanning now. We still have, in fact, Town Council member Tricone had stopped by a couple weeks ago and saw everybody in the boardroom, and we have about 27 totes, and that's just getting ready for their work this summer, because this particular group of young people, they all head to college the end of August. So we're trying to have a scan of every town record, and there's a lot. That book was over 1,000 pages.
Wow. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I would like to take... In a second to introduce, I apologize, one of our fellow council members from Chesapeake Beach, Mr. Larry Jaworski hiding in the back. So thank you for coming, Larry. All right, let's move right into the big hit basket award. Perfect. I'm glad somebody knows who's doing this.
Is hiding in the room.
Yes. Oh, I'm sure they do.
We had good turnout from the residents in the town, but the businesses were dismal, to be honest. But we had a few people with kick baskets. First one, first place is Rose Bertram. Want to come up?
Thank you very much.
Second place is Kelly Bradshaw. Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Do you want to jam in? Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, okay. It's a lovely idea.
And third place is Christine Schulman. And fourth place, please, is Sharon Francis. And she said she couldn't make it. She works in Alexandria. And our businesses, first place was Hook &amp; Vine. Is she here? Is she here? Oh. And the place is at the Bay Healing Arts. And they said they couldn't make it.
Well, thank you so much. Let's move right into public safety. Ronnie?
Yes, sir. Good evening. So for one day, we'll share us all's handles, 137 calls here in North Beach. It's up from 129 in March. It's up a little bit from last year at the same time. It's a highlight of a little failed herald over those overall history. Any questions? Maybe to that. I wanted to address Councilmember Dox.
Without the name, without the name.
About the subject, last year, last week, month, you asked me about the gentleman who forked around. I did confer with the state's attorney, reported his attention, and if I don't be resolved to be out there the next afternoon, I will be to sit down with the gentleman and have a chit chat with him and see what's more to it. But the last, he did do some jail time last month. If you go back and look at his history, you can see a lot of things where he's been, his case has been put on set docket. He's received a 30-day jail sentence, and they suspended the whole 30 days. He's received a thirty-day jail sentence and they suspended the whole thirty days. It's been a boggling war for him. He does have some mental issues as I explained before. As far as being dangerous, he's not, only indignant, he is, unfortunately, he's not a communist, he's being ignorant, but we're working on it all. And we're working with the state of the mayor and just the staff that afford all the work on that with the issue. Be a long-term solution.
Thank you. Move right on to treasurer Joe.
I am loading my report and waiting for the swat. There it is, there we are. All right, you have my report in front of you. There was no state business license revenue this month and hotel tax was three sixty-four sixty-one.
You'll have Johnny's report, any questions? Nope, thank you so much.
Yes, sir, good evening everyone. Since we have such a nice sized crowd in there, I'd like to relay a little bit of disappointing news. We've been waiting, since we have so many residents here, we've been waiting and waiting for State Highway, the older meeting, the Maryland two sixty-one project. That meeting was scheduled for May the twentieth at Windy Hill Middle School from seven to nine, but that has been postponed. We do not have a date for that. New meeting, project's still going on, design's still going on. Everything is still pretty much on schedule, but there's supposed to be a good public information about that detour, you know, deputy on the project, who are going over the scope of the project. But as I say, as soon as we find out, we're in communication with John Lanning, who's project manager, Dawn is emailing, he's emailed me. As soon as we do get that date, we'll, we'll discuss it. And one other thing, just to counsel, we did have resident last, best council meeting came in and talked about Greenwood Avenue. We did do all, we picked up a situation there, the road is very narrow, sense of development was pretty intense this year. There's a lot more traffic, a lot more two-bus, trash trucks, that type of stuff on Greenwood Avenue. We measured the road, there is room there, they're currently underway to get surveyed and get a budget. We can get a budget estimate, contract to figure out why they're there and to protect this on the east side there, according to the nature of the property. So I'll update you that next month soon, we'll survey this, we'll figure out what could happen along.
Donnie's report, any questions? And just with the two sixty-one, that's the state highway, also is M dot, it's M dot project. We will continue to stay on top of them. It's still, you know, the, you, there will be public conversations, there will be a public meeting, the project's not going to start, it's, the communication's going to be there. They push the public hearing back, it's, it's them doing it, but there will be one and as soon as we know more, just like we updated everybody the first couple of times, we promise you, you will not miss the meeting. We wish they didn't postpone, but they did and there's not much you can do with M dot. So as soon as we know more, we promise you, you will know. All right, Paul, town engineer.
I guess I'm the same vein. They have, the state has been reaching out to us via email, et cetera, on stormwater issues and things. I mean, it's not like, we're not talking to them, but for whatever reason, they moved the meeting. And I just touch on, Donnie and I have really been working hard on some of the home station issues, sewer, I don't know if it's stormwater or if it's sewer. Some of them need to be upgraded, need to be upgraded here in the near future. Somewhere with our partner, Calver County, we've got a lot of battle over that moving forward, so. Continue on, if you have any questions for me.
Paul's reporting, any questions? Thank you so much. Rick, code enforcement.
All right, you have the report and the other one that you wanted, one is in there for the ones that are currently open and I just closed.
Thank you.
Really, most of what I've been working on lately is that we found a way to use the software that we have now to also track all the zoning permits that we issue, well, zoning permits, listings permits, and the fees associated with them. So my last two or three weeks have been spent with that entry, trying to do everything from the last year and get it back into the system.
And any questions for Rick? You have his report? Nope, all right, great, thank you so much, Rick. Dawn is not here, she's not here tonight. Her report is in your file, file package. Also, when I keep saying package, the same package is on our website under board docs that every resident can click on and see. We get them out early in the week, so you have time to read them, review them, and so forth. All right, Ron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
One bit of good news that I just got an email today is we were awarded and approved our sustainable community application, which again gives us our designation for applying for all of the grant funding that we applied for, for all of the state funds. And this was done in collaboration with the county, Chesapeake Beach, and North Beach. So.
Good job.
Moving ahead for sure, then we can apply for all of the money that we request. In your package, you're going to see Love Where You Live program and we're kind of tabling that for right now and we're going to discuss that a little bit further. But last month I spent the time working on the resilience program, which really goes into detail about all of the stormwater and infrastructure issues that we need to work on with the town. And this will help us really dig deep in putting together a plan that we can then go about funding the future for the infrastructure that assists with flooding within the town. So we put in that application last month and we're underway on putting in another application for stormwater. As you know, stormwater is the theme for this year. We're working on all the flood reviews and trying to recover and get some grant dollars for that. Any questions?
Thank you so much. You have Ron, did you have any question?
Healthy Home should start soon?
Yes, I'm sorry. Just got a grant agreement two days ago and there's six people that are waiting, waiting, waiting. Thank you for your patience. I know you've been calling, emailing, and we can now start now that we have our executed grant agreement. So we can start and the county's going to be putting out a blast all over the county. So if you're waiting with your application, please hurry and put it in before they send that blast out so that you can be eligible for funding.
Ron, can you just say a little bit more about what it is, just in case if anybody doesn't know exactly what we're talking about?
Doesn't know and it's on the website in case you want to access the full application. It's called the Healthy Home Program. And the Healthy Home Program is a program for income-eligible people within the whole entire Calver County. And it'll help you with energy efficiencies, lowering your utility bills, your water bill, your, your electricity bill within your house. So it's going to give you upgrades. Some of the things that it will pay for for free is your new HVAC system, weatherization in your attic, energy star, appliances, water heater, and furnaces. So it's pretty major stuff. And hopefully there's some people in the audience who need some of that stuff and can apply. So hurry for the money, so.
If you have more questions, you can always reach out to town hall tomorrow and, or we can get, you know, shoot us an email. Thank you so much.
We had a really good day today with over a hundred and twenty students from Windy Hill Elementary School came out and did a tour of the town, the town hall. They also came to Sunrise Garden and they got to hear about Ospreys and other migratory birds as a kickoff for my event that is this Saturday from ten to twelve, which is the International Migratory Bird Day, Welcome Back Ospreys event at Sunrise Garden. So I hope you would come out in the morning, if you have time and you want to learn more about Ospreys, where you agreed to have a guest speaker talk about her book, Olive and Osk, Olive and Oscar the Ospreys. So that is the same. Last week, as part of planning the town, we did a cleanup of Walton's Beach Preserve with the Northern High School ROTC. Only five students showed up, but they were fantastic. And we cleaned about a hundred and fifty pounds of trash and plastic and debris and a little plastic baby swimming pools off the beach. The coolest thing was we found an easy pass.
You can keep that.
And lots and lots of shotgun shells, which the kids were concerned about, but I explained them about duck hunting, I can't know, just in the back. So they won't worry. So it's been a busy month.
Thank you so, any questions for Lisa? Great, thank you so much. All right, we'll move right into public comment at this time. If you have any comments, please come up to the podium, state your name, your address, I knew you. That's a good thing.
It's a great thing. My name is Reginald White, Regent White, ninety-two, Ten Atlantic Avenue. For those of you who know, I've forgotten my name. Two things. First thing, I heard something about hotel tax and I was wondering about are we actually collecting tax in Airbnb? So I didn't know if that's true or not.
Joe.
Yes, we do. It's, the hotel tax is a county tax. The town, it gets a small percentage of what they collect, but we monitor everyone that we become aware of that need to be licensed through the town in order to be.
And that includes Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now, second thing, residents parking on Atlantic Avenue. For those of you who don't know, there are parking spaces and people come into town, I want people to come into town. I just want to be able to park in front of my house when I come home from work, especially on Fridays and Saturdays when it starts to get busy. There used to be signs on the B G N E post, lamp post, and they removed the posts to replace them. And from my understanding, they said we couldn't quickly do signs that said residents parking on those sign, on those lamp posts. But we do have stickers. I know there's no towing, I know there's no towing, but it is a deterrent for those people when they see the sign to maybe just think about not parking there. Several times last summer in front of my driveway, which I still have a strike, I need it, somehow, if you never get a chance, I appreciate it, parked in front of my driveway, just like, and got a car. I'm like, do you see the car parked in the driveway? Oh, I thought it was a parking space. What?
I told you I was sorry, all right? I was trying to take your Mercedes.
Yeah, that too. And everything was good. But I actually, the idea is a deterrent and we just need a deterrent. And I know there's something there for the people who are actually on the boardwalk that have a parking space, they have a garage, and there's green space that says for residents parking. They have a green tag. That is so cool. But I'm just saying for us, the signs back and for those of us who have little stickers on the car that says resident, resident of North Beach, then that's pretty much all we need, with just a deterrent. I'd like to see someone come back.
We are in the process of, we're doing a map that has every single street sign, road sign, any sign in town. We're going to put it all on a map and then go with the mayor to look at what the signs are, what they say.
There's nothing here.
I know, but what we're, what we're going to do was, we've got a lot of places where we've got fifty signs that are confusing and other places like your street where there are none, so we're going to map out what they all are and then come up with a plan to try and clean up the ones that they, that don't, aren't needed and then put some in places that are needed. And parking on in the green, we will probably start ticketing that again as the farmers markets is back in swing, so that should help deter people as well.
Mr. White, question next to you. The B G N E signs, they can look the other way, but it's their requirement. Because what they say is when, they don't let us, you know, we're not even supposed to put anything on the big poles, they kind of look the other way, but when they put the new poles up, that the guy came down the lane, he contacted, he said, you know, we can't have any more signs because it's their code, wind blows and polar, whatever, they say it's because of sun or something like that. So that's, we didn't do it by night long, but they were told not to put them at night.
Can I make a statement?
That's what we're looking at with breaks like these, so I'm going to look at the whole.
The thing I was thinking about, where the poles are, I think the poles are stop signs, the poles that are all galvanized. If you put one of those short on every one and the signs that residents are parking, again, it's not, I don't think it's relatively expensive than that, but then I don't know because I don't know what you know, what you know, it takes you all of that. But the idea is that we need something.
Yeah, we're looking at it. Yeah, we're definitely looking at it. About halfway done with the map now, we've got about ten streets left. We've had a chilling, but so it is being drawn.
Yeah, I'm with Atlantic as well and I support everything the state regulations that I beg, please do not paint the curves on Atlantic.
I didn't ask for a sign, no, it's a sign. No, 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 I didn't ask for a sign.
I agree. Thank you. Anything else? One second, Jake, go ahead. All right, go ahead.
One quick question. At one time you said that the homeowners along Bay Avenue that are going to be affected by the two sixty-one project would have their own meeting? Does that still affect I'm seeing?
The last thing we received was the, the large meeting for everybody. I'm not sure if they're going to do a separate one or not. We were still working with on that. What we do know for a fact is they will have one that everybody can go to, so the same goal will be accomplished. You know, at one time they said they would do one just for the ones that are affected. I don't know. We're pushing them to at least get something.
Pushing to get the two of them.
I can email them and ask, I can just email John Lanning directly if you want to.
I feel like we'd be more beneficial to the homeowners right there than it is actually when it's going on, is competing with other people that may live in Fringe.
Jake, what they only, only about two weeks ago was if you had any comments or whatever, send them to John Lanning, that their group is working on those questions and they definitely, whatever way you sent the questions up, like you email them, they're going to email them back, if you call, they're supposed to call you back. So they are working on individual questions to residents' hat, but they didn't really specify like a separate meeting for the residents.
It's important to submit your questions and all to them though because they guarantee me that they will answer them. They have a whole group that's supposed to be working on those questions and comments because the town also submitted about ten questions and we hadn't got a response to that yet and we were talking about that.
Jake, they absolutely said they were going to do it too. They told us that. We will reach back out to them again and see. But what Donnie said, please get the questions to them because it's on paper. Everything, we, we did it on paper because I want to make sure they can't get around that and answer my questions. You know, and I don't want to get caught up in an event where all these, everybody's asking questions and they, no, they have more than enough time to answer my question because it's on paper. So try to do that. Don, you had something?
I just wanted to say one thing. We got a really nice gentleman that lived right outside of town on Fifth Street. He's had these koi fish for probably eighteen years, they were fried, enjoyed, and unfortunately he's moved out of, not too far, the area, but it's moved out of here, so maybe it's a chance, go down through the, through the park on Third Street because he donated twenty-six koi and they're probably about this long. He donated them, put them in the pond, a nice guy, Mr. Suzuki. He plans on visiting every day and he's been working at least, he might even do some talks about koi fish, how to raise them, how to take care of the pond and the traps, so. I thought it was a nice fish, he had some really nice fish, it'd probably worth a couple thousand dollars at least a piece.
Ospreys are a lot of the kind of way. They are bullying.
That's good, that's good.
Now I know why there's a hawk there today.
Yeah.
I saw him walk down there and almost went in that pond.
Do we have any more public comment? Nope, great, all right. Let's move right into business items. Ordinance of resolution. So the first point is a motion to introduce ordinance nineteen dash zero-one fiscal twenty-twenty Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Motion to introduce ordinance nineteen dash two fiscal nineteen budget adjustments.
I want to introduce ordinance nineteen dash two.
Is it eighteen?
No, it's nineteen. All the ways, nineteen dash zero-one. Zero-two, look at that, we're just missing this all. All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. The next item on our list is a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash four, a resolution for the application to the community legacy department for a stormwater infrastructure program.
Move to approve.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Let's move right into council reports. Let's start with Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. I don't have much to say. I don't have much to say, but just happy to be here. Thank you.
Just like to thank everyone for participating in Plan To Town last weekend, and also people before that, Christmas people. I think there were something like 40 or 40 houses across the county that were repaired for that program, so it's just great to see the community done the other, like, helping it around, and all make this town even better than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and I hope to see you at the Osprey event this weekend.
It's great to see so many people out on a beautiful evening. I just want to quickly mention, for those who didn't know, we had the second business summit a couple of weeks ago, and we call it the Spring Summit. Lisa Garrett is our newest member to the town, was there as a panelist, so you jumped right in, we threw you into the fire, so to speak. We had a wonderful panel of five different people, Lisa, Veronica Owens, our own, talked about grant buying, we had over a dozen businesses that came out, and they wanted to hear, they wanted to be able to network with each other, and hear from other experts. We had Bob Partner from the Chamber of Commerce, Hillary Daly from Tourism, and Danita from the County Economic Development. So it was a great opportunity to learn about different resources, for them to network, and we'll be summarizing some of their requests, they want more marketing help, they want to host conservation talks with Lisa, and some other, some other great ideas that came out of it, so we'll be sharing that. The EDC is doing a great job trying to support the businesses, and really be a liaison between the businesses and the mayor and council, so I want to thank you guys for all you did that night. And Stacy and everybody else, it was really a team effort, and the mayor even helped set up tables, right? And Donnie, so it was definitely a team effort. Thanks, everybody.
I know, I did.
Was that?
That's like, no, I didn't.
Yeah, First Lady set up the tables.
Thank you for all coming out, thank you all for staying. Sometimes in the meeting, people will come and like, first, get their award, and then like, okay, good night, and roll. So it's always nice to see you guys hang out, sort of veteran here, although the meeting's fairly going fast. So, but thank you, and hopefully I'll see everybody next time.
Thank you so much, Randy. All right, so we did, we had, we hosted Windy Hill, first graders, my son was one of them, four groups of 25 to 30, and as Stacy will tell you, by the time the fourth group was here, I was ready to go home, go to bed. It was herding cats, it was amazing. God bless teachers and chaperones. It was a great time, though, it was great to have them here and having, and supporting Windy Hill. I was not available, I was not around this week, I had to go to South Carolina, my in-laws moved, but I was staying in contact with everybody, and I, Plan To Town was an amazing success, cleaning up Walton's Beach, and it was funny, because I was sharing pictures with my in-laws, and they just built this new home, and, and they were just amazed the activity and the support that the community comes out for these events, so I cannot thank you enough, I was so proud to show everybody what everybody was doing while I was moving. Other than that, we're going to continue having meetings with Cavan County with infrastructure, so stay tuned. We will keep you informed, as we have worked hard to make sure that you guys are in the loop, and you know what's going on, so other than that, I truly appreciate you coming out tonight. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Thank you so much.